Let's get the meeting over before they get in.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here. I declare a quorum. Next, I'd like to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of October 12th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, report and recommendation, Wooddale branding. Mr. Cage.
Thank you Chairman. Just as a brief introduction, I'm sure everybody remembers last week we had the comprehensive plan open house. We had a branding session to that. With me today I have Michael Blue of TESCA, Carl Walt of the Carl Walt Group. And they're going to give a presentation on branding to kind of catch everybody up to speed. I know a number of elected officials have seen parts, if not the majority of this. Certainly this was discussed at the steering committee, the open house, but it's just to make sure that everybody's up to speed on the branding aspect which was a major component of the comprehensive plan. And with that, I'll hand it over to Carl.
Great. Can lights be controlled a little bit up in that direction so that the color works up?
Yeah.
Not all of it, just closer to the screen. Okay, good evening. Just to start out again, just as Ed said, this was an element of the comprehensive plan which is, it was kind of an unusual thing, but it's also really, really smart thing to be talking about this right now. In my experience has been since I've been working since 2009 is what we're seeing throughout the metro area is an increased interest in branding, marketing, public relations. There's more and more RFPs. And so the communities that do this right now are going to capture some high ground. It's going to make it difficult, more difficult for the laggards to catch up. I was telling Ed, you know, if you want to sell cola, it's good to be Coca-Cola or Pepsi because if you're not one of those, then you have to really have a lot to play catch up with. So here's where we've been. We've done our due diligence, a lot of research. We've been actually working on this for almost a year. A lot of feedback. What we did was developed what we call a market position, a brand promise, which I'll review with you in a moment. And then we moved on to we call a marketing identity development. It's worth noting that we aren't looking at replacing your seal, but what we do want to have is an identity system that can function in contemporary environments. So as part of the guidance, we had stakeholder interviews, we had city staff reviews. One of the things we did is look at peer communities and reported on that. We met with steering committee. We had a focus group with representatives of various institutions around the city. And then last week we did a series of open house presentations. And through each of these modifications have been made. And so what I'm going to show you is essentially the presentation that we gave to the focus groups, and then at the end I'll show you what has been modified as a result of that feedback. So the first step was market positioning. And as I mentioned, one of the first things we did as far as this is understanding what other peer communities were doing. So we looked about 20 of those guys. The other thing we looked at is what we call the Wooddale brand experience. And the best metaphor I can give is, you know, if you go to a game at Wrigley Field, your experience of that game isn't confined to the friendly confines. It's actually, that day includes, you know, getting up, meeting friends for breakfast, pre-gaming, and then afterwards, after the game, going out. Maybe you go to an entirely different neighborhood. And so what you're seeing here is, in the center is Wooddale, but this is the 30 mile drive time that we've been using because it's both sort of the average commute time, but it's also the average amount of time that people will go to go to a destination like an entertainment or a restaurant or a shopping destination. So what this means is for Wooddale, in terms of marketing yourself to the outside audiences, and you do have a national and international reach that many other communities don't have to address, these are all part of the experience of living here. This is kind of like Wooddale world. The other thing we looked at is not just the things that were good about Wooddale, but the things that were good that were different, that differentiate you from what we believe from your peer community. So that was all went into understanding what your community was all about. From that, we developed three different alternatives, three different brand positions, each with a different focus. One was about the idea of you as a nurturing community, including business and resident. The other was just purely business focused. But we also recognized that your connection to O'Hare Airport and your demographics and your business mix here is very international in nature. And so that was the one that people responded to the most, and so we went in there and we've been modifying that. That will probably continue to be modified. But I did want to read this. This is where we are right now. "The port of Wooddale image combines the city's small-town charm with its global marketplace appeal." That's very unique in Chicago. "The city's image as a port is reflected in the international character of the many new residents who choose Wooddale as their home. The same quality of life amenities that have drawn residents for generations, regional transit access, attractive housing options, good schools, and highly utilized recreational facilities have continued their appeal to a new wave of residents who have selected Wooddale as their favorite port of entry. The port image is also reflected in the many global companies that have helped Wooddale build its reputation as a premier business address." I wanted to underscore that because when interviews, when talking to people, we definitely, you guys have a great reputation, business-friendly reputation. "The city's location between O'Hare and I-290 making an ideal home for businesses that desire easy access to Chicago's expansive marketplace. The Illinois 390 project and future O'Hare improvements will provide additional opportunities for Wooddale to leverage its business-friendly image and strengthen its long-term economic prospects. Wooddale's international character is not limited to big business. Irving Park Road, for example, has one of the O'Hare region's densest clusters of locally-owned ethnic restaurants. These dining destinations have a style and personality that reflect Wooddale's friendly, small-town character." And so we distilled that down to what we call a brand promise. It's sort of the elevator speech. But Wooddale celebrates both its small-town charm and international character as one of the O'Hare region's most welcoming communities for businesses and new residents. And so this is not an ad campaign. This would be used as sort of a framework for developing a future marketing campaign. But the idea, so the idea of the port may or may not translate into that, but we like, people like the idea of the concept of you, especially the connection to O'Hare Airport. So in terms of marketing identity that then followed this, these were sort of the principles that we looked at. We want to make sure you're differentiated from peer communities. Thing that's different about this program, almost every other community worked in, we pretty much started from scratch because their existing identity didn't translate into modern applications. But here you had the leaf, and also you've been all some new signage that had a type font that was, had been selected. And so basically, we basically retrofit that. You'll see that in a second. The program has to be easy to understand and implement. You don't have 50-person staff, and we also want other outside organizations hopefully to use this at some point. We anticipate expanded use of identity by other local organizations. And this is the thing about whether you agree with what we're doing here 100%, these programs don't sell themselves. You really need to have advocacy for this, especially to outside audiences and the marketplace. And everybody really does, we think, benefit economically in the long term by raising the profile of the community and make it more easily understandable in the competitive markets. So the other kind of thing is it has to work very large and very small, and it has to work on very light and very dark colored backgrounds. And so this is a slide we use as an example of that. I know several years ago when USA Today came out with the blue ball and Walmart came out with, I call the yellow asterisk, but it was a, I think they called it a sunburst. Everybody was kind of confused. Well, it was all about the smartphone, or what we call the tyranny of the smartphone. Whereas in previous years, the logo had to be about the size of a diamond, work on a business card, and then large to work on a water tower. Now all of a sudden it had to be 3/30 seconds of an inch. And this has driven this real simplicity that you see now in a lot of identities. And just as a note, the other thing is there's been a race for the alphabet with Google Plus, Facebook, and other people. So the world has changed because of this, and communities, I think the last time I saw, 70% of interactions now are done on smartphone devices. So this is a very important application that we have to get right. And as a result, again, this is why it's great to be making, having this discussion now. Most of the other communities around Chicago have identities that can't work in that environment. The ones that are not crossed out there probably could work, but they're still would have, I think, some issues. So the other part about doing logo and identity, people focus on the logo a lot, but it does only some of the heavy lifting. The other part, and we use Apple as an example, 30 years ago or plus when it was introduced, nobody knew what that meant, that it ultimately came to represent, you know, the highest-end consumer electronics. But over 30 years of marketing, great website design, great product design, great advertising, beautiful stores, they have built this image of this very, very high-end product. And that's what we're looking as part of the comprehensive plan as that gets implemented. That's going to be part of your, that's part of that image building process that will ultimately help transform the brand. And as we say, you can have a great, great logo, but if the environments it appears in, whether it's a website or a page, doesn't match the quality of the logo, then that image is going to suffer. So in terms of, I mentioned earlier that we didn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Instead, what we did was took a look at what you were doing today. You had the seal, and then you had this new outline version of the leaf that appears on your new signage. And so what we said is we want to take that and continue to use it, but we took the leaf from the seal then and merged those two together to create a symbol that would have greater presence when reproduced in color. And so that's what we have. We have a version that can continue to be used on signage. Then we have this other one that we're working with for the visual identity. But we decided also that to give that more dynamism and more feel that we looked at actually doing a cluster of four. And then in terms of color, people responded very favorably to the comp plan logo with the multi-color leaves. So again, this color is pretty bad right here, but the initial shot out of the gate was we'd look at different leaves. In this case, we were kind of trying to reference the Four Seasons. So color is always one of the last things to get decided. I already know we're going to be working on that still. The other part then was the type. Again, we wanted to make sure we understood what your peer communities around you are doing. A lot of serif type and other interesting approaches. So basically, we don't want to look like that. But you already had a really classic typeface that you're using for your signage. And so we did go back, we looked at a couple hundred typefaces to make sure we're doing the right thing. But we really did like that typeface, but we thought because of the environments, again, legibility, we needed to make it bolder. So this was the first approach. And what you're seeing there at the top, generally when you do these programs, you need to have different configurations of it depending on the application. So the one on the top is sort of like flush left, random right version. The one in the center is one line centered. And the other is a centered, but it's stacked. And then what we do is we test these on these different environments to make sure that they're legible. And I should mention too, that first column, we found that doing identities for municipalities, what we want other institutions hopefully over time to use this, if not for their own identity, as an endorser. And I'll show you that in a minute. And so if the city though, if people perceive it to be the city's identity, libraries and park districts and other people tend to run away from that. So what we did was, the first step was to create what we call the community brand. The community owns this. You own it and you manage it, but it's a, it's a community identity. The second one is that we created a version where in a future marketing campaign, we would have some kind of tagline attached to it that would be focused on that particular campaign theme. And that's the one that we are hoping other organizations will use as an endorser. And this is the example. So on the right are some promotional items with the tagline. But on the left are identities of other institutions here in Wooddale. And what we'd like to do is have them use that and have it appear along with their identity. The more times you can get this out into the environment, the more impressions you create, the faster it builds brand equity. So this is a discussion we continue to have, but this has been structured to work that way. The other thing we tested, these were examples of Metro signage. You see the logos in the upper right. You have to have, it has to have a variation where it reverses completely to white. Again, this is just an example to test out the identity. Then there's an institutional version, which would be the signature use for the city and/or any other institutions here that might want to use it. And so we then tested that in a variety of different applications and colors just to see how that would work. One of the great things about the leaf is it can be used as a decorative motif. We also looked at variations that might appear on some of the signage that's now being developed. Also use like a lapel pin. One of the things we tell people, and by the way, you've all been deputized as brand managers now. So we want people to be able to wear this as a lapel pin or a brooch of some sort. That's a great application to get that image out into the public. And lastly, we looked at using, allowing for special campaign-themed applications. You know, this idea of the port of Wooddale, which people like the port idea as part of the brand positioning. I'm not sure that we'd ever see that used for an ad campaign, so that's something down the road to think about. But we then tested it on, again, a variety of environments where we're trying to advance the, elevate the profile of the community. So feedback to date, one of the things we heard, and you'll see on the third column at the top, that was the original, people thought that maybe it's a little too bold. So we started looking at a variety of different variations of that font and weights. And one with the red dot is where we are right now. The other thing that was mentioned, color. So that's always usually one of the last things that gets decided. And we'll certainly workshop that to death until everybody's happy. But what we did was, the original feedback was, got rid of the blue leaf. The colors were primary. We look at more tertiary. Some people didn't like the brightness. So also people comment, what about looking at different configurations of the leaf? Maybe all the same size, maybe four, maybe three. We looked at that. And ultimately, we decided we did like the four-leaf cluster. We just worked on the color and modifying it. And so this is where we are today with a version of it reversed out.
One more, I think.
I'm sorry?
The one is an airplane on it.
Oh, and the train, the Metro.
I can't.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a prototype, but whether that ever would wind up being used for an application, I didn't know. We just wanted to test to validate that it could actually work.
I just want to make sure I was clear on where, how you guys got to where you are today. So this is all done through the groups, citizen groups that came to this font, came to this coloring. And so it's coming to us to say, all right, stamp of approval, let's move forward.
Bearing that there'll be refinements to the final one with color, probably the font weight still is yet to be finalized. But generally, the idea that we have this four, cluster of four leaves, we have some kind of, you know, this type's going to be pretty bold, which we needed to be pretty bold to read at an endorser level size, so.
This is to move it forward. We're saying essentially tonight that, you know, basically 90, 95% of what we like, we need to tweak maybe the font, we need to tweak the colors, but we do like the concept. We kind of like the proportions. We kind of like the general direction that we're going in. And all those things were a byproduct of the subcommittees we had and the different community involvement that we had.
And this is being advanced as part of the comp planning process because there are applications waiting for this. So rather than wait until a comp plan's completed in several months, we thought we'd get a jump on this so these applications could be addressed and we could get to the final of this.
So the next step, you're going to tweak some of these things.
Yes.
We have opportunity to give input on those things.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Next face, he said.
Okay. Yeah.
We're going to do that. And we're going to do it next phase. I have the same comments, probably the same as you. So they're going to tweak all that. They just want to make sure at least the general direction they have of what's up there is good. I agree. Some of the font I'm not a fan of, but that's what we're going to do next time. They just want to make sure they're not wasting their time.
No, I thought they wanted, I'm sorry. I thought they wanted input what would be like the seeds to change. That's what I got.
Well, yeah, there's nothing wrong with now saying, hey, I'm not, I would like to tweak the fonts or I'm not sold on those three colors for the leaves, or they need to have a greater impact, or lighter, or change them.
Yeah, I mean, I guess rather than waiting, sure. I mean, I look at us with the two words, it's like Upper Ridge. I think you had that up there, right? Where the font, maybe in the capital parts, the D in Wooddale, the D in Dale, be bigger and then maybe the font be smaller in the middle. But again, you're going to talk to eight people. You're probably going to say eight different, eight different things. I just don't know, the bold, I get the idea of it sticking out. It just looked like a, I don't know, something I drew when I was eight and I like did the bubble lettering, in my opinion. I love the direction. I did, personally. But I do like the, I do like the direction you guys are going, totally.
And we were building off the font you already were using on your, this is just a bolder weight version of that, which is a classic font. So we didn't want to create a different look entirely with this. So I feel like we want to stay in this ballpark if we can. We can adjust the weight, the word spacing, and things like that so it doesn't look maybe as clunky, yeah.
Yeah, because that second column was more in line with what I was thinking. But again, I'm one of eight, so do your thing.
Yeah, the colorful leaves, I'm not too fond about the colorful leaves. I like the one that we have, the existing one, the black outline. I mean, we see welcome to Wooddale signs. I mean, we're branding that way, so now we're changing it and putting it into colors. I think it looks more richer if we just keep it with the dark and the, I mean, the outline, the dark outline. That's my opinion.
Just to add one thing to that, you look at Tony's polo right now, right? I ordered the same polo. The colors in my leaves and my letters are completely different. And when you go to different colors, depending on where we order stuff, everything's going to be varied. So you kind of have a very valid point. You can't really screw up black and white.
Well, and typically in these programs, you do have to have a variation. It's all black or gray. And then that one where you saw reverse to white. So there could be applications where you could take this and just reproduce it in one color. You have to have one color standard so that you don't always have a chance to do a four-color reproduction.
Could we go back to that one slide we were looking at before? The one with the Alderman Eugene Wesley? Yeah, where he had, yeah. So when you guys first started out, I mean, was it towards, I mean, I'm not quite sure of the different, like, ways you have them. I mean, is that just all options you guys had, or did you start out with some and you?
Again, the type part was built off, well, the symbol was built off the existing leaf. The type was built off, again, what you already had started with for your signage. The thought was that on these really tiny little applications, that was probably, type was probably too light. So we just looked at a bolder version. And then we developed these other, like the flush left, random right, centered, one line, centered two lines. Because different applications you're going to need because of space available and things, some different variations of that so that you can, so that you can use which one of the ones that you, you might, the space allows, but it doesn't lose the character of the color and the type. So this is kind of common in an identity program to have variations like that. Is that, am I answering your question?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I'm concerned on the tagline. You said that's going to come later at a later point, or?
You know, we, we don't like slogans and they, often for communities that think they get ossified pretty quick. We like the idea of a tagline, like IBM does this all the time, you know, solutions for a small planet. So as programs move forward with the marketing and you're doing that, that's a great thing to use as a refresher. So yes, at this point, the next step for you guys would be to develop a marketing strategy and a campaign of some sort, depending on what kind of applications you think best suits you, whether it's metro advertising or a dedicated website. And that's, that's the place to do the tagline and figure that out so that you're not tied down at that point. And you're not throwing something out into the wild that you now have to change because the focus of the theme of the campaign is now different.
Thank you. You've said more than once this evening that all of your basic input came from what's existing right now as far as the signage.
Starting point.
Would it be more of a creative stance if you came up with something and then we amended the signs that we have now? Would that be more cost-effective, or you just don't even want to go there?
Well, from a graphic standpoint, what you had was pretty good. And I can't believe I'm saying that because we've never said that in a community before. So you have what they call brand or visual equity built up on that. And to change that for a community, you know, you're not Procter and Gamble. You don't have a $6 billion budget. So it makes a lot of sense where there are instances of where you have something good is not to, again, throw the baby out with the bathwater. So for you guys, and again, I can't believe I'm saying this, but it made perfect sense for you guys to do some form of retrofit so that you didn't have to change your signage and you didn't have to change, you know, the idea that you are connected to that, you're Wooddale, you're connected to the leaf.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. I just wanted to be certain that you didn't feel handcuffed based on what we have existing. I think what we have existing now is awesome, so.
Especially in this avatar size, you know, that 3/30 second, it may be just a single leaf, but it's good. You guys are going to own this leaf now, so.
Just curious, what's with the port of Wooddale? Why do we put that?
That's a good question. You know, I think when we were developing our brand positioning, one of the things that we heard was the importance of the airport to your, to your economic competitiveness. Local markets here may understand that you guys are pretty close to O'Hare and what a great advantage that is from a business standpoint, recruiting businesses. But you have national and international markets who don't know Wooddale that well. And so the idea was, we want to, that's, one thing is to connect you guys with that airport in terms of a position. Keep that in mind as you market in the future. And then the other idea is that you do have people who, you are like the old time port where you're getting people and diverse populations here, and they're coming directly here. And so that also helps position you as a welcoming community, as a place where people want to come when they come to this country. So there are a lot of positives about it, but really it was the idea, I know you think of harbors and water, but the airport connection is, again, you're going to grab something no one else is thinking about like right now. And that's a really positive thing, I think. I can't believe no one has actually used that, so.
Can we go back to the lapel, the pin picture? Is there any way that we could put in there, like the city of Wooddale?
Yeah, I mean, it could be a circle or something. Yeah, it could have.
Right.
You could actually have several.
Several, right.
They're not that expensive, so.
Because it looks like, you know, we're Canadians if we just go around with that. Thank you.
And back to the port thing, I guess. I think it's, it is very smart. It's the first time I've ever heard it. I just, I know if I came here and I didn't know Wooddale, I'd be pretty disappointed. You want to see a port, I can show you a rain garden, but I don't know, that's about it. So I don't know. I like the idea. It's so cool and so unique if we had some type of body of water to. South Creek, yeah. So maybe it's the creek of Wooddale, the creeps of Wooddale. I don't know. It's a great idea. I just don't know.
I don't know if it'd wind up, you know, if it was used in an ad campaign, it would be a sort of tongue-in-cheat type of campaign, so there'd be a bit of humor to it. But whether it winds up in a campaign, I don't know. We, again, the brand positioning isn't, isn't a campaign. It's sort of a framework for how to approach future, future communications and image.
I would, I would just hesitate, or I would just err on the, err on caution in that who, who the, who's contributing that feedback of the airport, because it's a very sour subject for a lot of people. So you wear that lapel, or you wear that rotary gear with that plane and train in my ward, you're going to get a lot of comments and you're going to get a lot of irritated people. The business people love it, the residents hate it. So it's a fine balance of.
Well, again, as we did this prototype campaign that we saw here, that didn't test that great. It was exactly these comments, so that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure I would advance that as a campaign theme.
A mini-campaign to bring in businesses? Yeah, I get that, right. Would we put that in our newsletter? Please no. Right, okay.
Yeah, it could be, exactly. In fact, you know, that, the bus stop there would be that kind of business-focused camp. would be that kind of business-focused campaign where you're trying to attract, you know, elevate your profile in the business community. So, where you're promoting Thorndale Avenue development or business location.
Well, Alderman Jacob, we don't have any other questions. So, my, my initial thought on the Port of Wooddale was the same thing. Ports, water, boats, Wooddale, I don't get it. But then, when I backed out and took a higher view and more abstract thinking of location, airport, ports involved, play on words, some of those things, international, port, location, destination, grouping, those things. So, from that perspective, it is going after businesses and that's what we're really kind of shooting for, to heighten the value both to the resident, going after those businesses to locate here and bring jobs and all those good things that come along with it. So, I think it is unique. And as I looked at, I work in a lot of these communities and I followed some of them under line and as they went through branding and some of the battles that they fought and looked at that montage of branding or signage that, from all the communities and went, wow, how do you pick one that's different? And I think you guys have done a great job in thinking outside the box. We do, I do agree that we need to play with that font a little bit, I'm not sold on that and probably the color of the leaves, but the rest of it, I think, is, is pretty good and I think that everybody else kind of agrees with that. So, I think this evening, we're just looking for direction for them that we agree, you know, for the most part and then move the ball to the, to the finishing stages with this and fine-tuning and tweaking those things. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cage?
Absolutely. Thesaurus.com. Maybe not port, but I said Thesaurus.com. Close words, that.
You have another, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No, I agree, I mean, it's, it's a nice concept that we got going here. And I agree, we need to work on a font and everything else, so that would be my direction.
And I, I think that Alderman Catalano's point of, and Sonny touched on it also, that we didn't want to change what we have. So, that's a good thing, the only thing we're doing is introducing another version of the same element.
Yes, right.
That we're gonna use for different marketing campaigns. So, as we were going through all that and all those different categories and Peter, you were asking questions about that, those are, those are the different values of those logos or avatars for different segments of marketing, whether that's paper, internet, billboards, signage, you know, bus signs and stuff for different weights and values of the same item. So, I think it transcribes really well and those leaves will be quite the identifier when they get out there. So, that being said, I'll make a motion to.
Second.
Direct staff to direct Carol and Mike to move forward.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes. That passes. Thank you, guys.
Hey, thank you.
Next item to be considered at future meetings, multiple UDO text amendments, November 9th, train station signage, November 9th, City Hall electronic sign, November 9th, Chapter 3 code revision, November 9th, back here, some snacks, November 9th. Thorndale corridor rezoning, winter of 2018. Does anybody have anything, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I just have one question, is there a way that we can move some of this stuff out? Because November 9th, I mean, we're gonna be here till midnight because.
No, we actually have it coordinated quite well. You'll notice that there are not other committees on November 9th. So, if we need to tweak it slightly, we will, but we kind of planned this out, I think it'll sink, it'll sink well.
You get the audit presentation. You got the property tax levy, I know that's minor tax abatement, but the audit report could go sometime.
Well, we'll figure it out, or we could, we could come Thanksgiving, Thursday, you want to come then?
It, it might, there's so many things we ask them to do and to get through the zoning code and that stuff. I mean, at some point, if it's. Zoning code could go, hours of stuff in it.
Well, believe me, it should, well.
Oh, my God.
Oh, yes.
I have something to add on there.
Sure, Alderman Messina, you want to add something?
Yeah, gaming cafes.
Gaming cafes, Mr. Chairman, you got that?
I don't know if we call it that, but whatever friendly.
Clarify, the manager. No other things being added, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All day.
Aye.
Close, we're adjourned.
Call the Finance and Administration Committee meeting to order. Please note the same people are in attendance. First, Finance and Administration Committee, regular meeting of October 22nd, 7:30 PM. Is there a?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Running opposed? That passes. Next up, reports and recommendations, vehicle sticker structure moving forward, that's that all over to Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There you see, one comment from the DIAS. But real quick, we, when we went to the program that we have currently, you know, the council wanted us to come back after it ran for a year, year and a half to give an update as to how it was going and then see if we thought there was any tweaks that needed to be made to it. This is real high-level, you know, the last paragraph of the memo, is, you know, the program, aside from a few phone calls from some confused people that forgot that their sticker was from two years, we had no real issues with it. Enforcement did not appear to be an issue from the PD side. We were able to kind of coordinate the sticker colors to avoid any obvious two-year sticker issues. I know there was concerns with the different stickers, people being identified and singled out and whatnots. That did not appear to be an issue that we heard from the police department. Also enforcement from people not having proper stickers. So, there weren't any real issues with it. So, you know, we're open for, for feedback, but there's not an immediate need for any changes from staff's perspective, but certainly open to what might come from the DIAS.
Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, do, do we have a policy now as far as following up for compliance?
Correct.
We do, yes. That came a couple of months ago when we had the second mailer approved from the DIAS. We're just gonna build that into the program every year now. Those mailers, that mailer is still coming out. We were getting a pretty fair amount of self-compliance even after the July 1st deadline. So, we figured if people were still self-complying, then we'd kind of let that run out a little bit. That's started to slow down significantly, so we are in the process of preparing that second mailer to get that out. Here in the very near future, we just try to be, try to be nice.
Right, I'd like to make a motion for the, the first option.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Couple of questions. Have we, did we see that policy or did I miss? I mean, did you send that policy to the DIAS? Maybe I missed.
Mr. Wilson?
Could you reissue it?
Sure, we can, yeah, it was just, it's more of a verbal, I thought it was just direction from the, the DIAS that night to just do the reminder mailer every year. That was kind of the direction that we had gotten, so we didn't send anything out. That was the direction we got that night, that was our interpretation of what we got that night.
But right now, you just said you were gonna send, if I'm mistaken, follow up with Tony. Didn't Tony say you're going to do a follow-up with that policy or?
Mr. Wilson?
Did I miss something here?
No, I asked if we do have a policy now, which we do.
Have you seen the policy?
They had the policy as far as sending out the follow-up letters, if you want to see it.
Okay, the other question is.
City man, city manager, Mr. Chairman, do you have something to say?
Clarify for Alderman Wesley, I, I think I get where he's going. How it worked was, since last year was the first year we did the mailer for the penalties to follow up. We brought it to you a couple of months ago to see if he wanted to do it again. And then, at that time, the direction was, if you did want to do it again, there's no need to come back every year. We would just make a policy that we would just do it.
And that did pass, right, Mayor, right?
Okay, my, my mind must be slipped, okay. As you get older, the mind slips. The other thing is, we already have two-year vehicle stickers out there?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so the first of them was issued last year, so in 16. And it would be good until June 30th of 18. So, the stickers, it's a two-year cycle. So, next year, all of the honorary stickers that we had, the almost 1,400 of them, they will get mailed back out and then they'll get a new two-year sticker that'll run from July 1 of 18 to June 30th of 2020. So, it's a two-years, two-year.
Refresh my memory because as you get older, the mind goes. Who gets the two-year stickers now? Can I apply for a two-year sticker?
Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the honorary stickers are the seniors, who are over 65, permanently disabled, and the military got the honorary stickers.
Can you clarify, it's their first car only, correct?
Correct, first car only. If they have additional vehicles, then those are at the list rate at that point.
So, one per household, essentially?
Correct, so there's a nuance with the military, but yes, one per household.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Say you need a vehicle sticker in the midterm, are they prorated?
Mr. Wilson?
The honorary ones for the two-year window, they're free, so, no. But then, everybody else is, everybody else is on a one-year sticker. So, it's, you know, for a regular passenger, it's 15. So, throughout the course of the year, it is not prorated at any point during the year. So, if you need one in February, it's still the same price as it would have been in May or June during the initial purchase period.
Great. So, we have a motion, we have a second, any other questions? Alderman Catalano, could you repeat your motion if possible for me, please?
It's the first option and the first option, everything stays the same. You know, we, we still gonna have the honorary program, that stays the same. So, it's pretty much no change, so.
All right, yep, roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, fiscal year 2017, audit presentation. Go ahead.
Okay, audit presentation, November 9th, property tax levy, November 9th. Truly pack your snacks, property tax abatement, 2012A bonds, November 9th. Property casualty and workers' comp insurance renewal, December 14th. Fiscal year 2019 CIP, January 11th. And fiscal year 2019 budget, February 22nd. Question, Mr. Roy Wesley or Alderman Roy Wesley?
Brad, are we still paying the phone bill for Sister City?
No, I can answer that, no, as president, former president.
I don't know, it was done through the city before.
Brad Wilson?
We paid for it.
No, we, so, well, I'm gonna raise my own hand for myself. As the former president, we actually paid that out of our own budget. So, it wasn't a city-funded phone line. And then we discontinued that, we were paying the city and we discontinued that in 16, 15? 15, yeah.
So, there is no more Sister City?
What?
Is there a Sister City anymore?
So, there is, we, we still are incorporated as a Sister City, we are. It's just dormant as of right now. That's about as much as I can say, I'll, Mayor, would you like to add to that?
Very simple, they may dissolve after the holidays. They're, they've been working on it and so if they dissolve whatever funds they have, then they're gonna have a meeting to figure out where to send those funds. That's basically where they're at.
So, when will we know that?
Maybe end of year?
After now?
Yeah. So, I encourage people, since I have the mic, I encourage people back home if, if, since we are going towards this international theme of Wooddale, this port. If you would like to nominate a Sister City, please come to the city and make your recommendations because we need support if we want to continue that program. Mayor? And of course, volunteers, which is probably historically the biggest problem that these programs have had. Alderman Roy Wesley.
In return. For some reason, if it does dissolve, I would like the city to look at another town of joining in possibly with Sister City nationally.
So, you would like the city to entertain, you have another city in mind?
Sure, Elk Grove.
Elk Grove is next door, they're not an international city.
Join theirs.
Oh, I understand, join with them, okay, okay. You want to put that on as a future item?
Sure.
Okay, city manager, can you?
I guess I have to wait till this one dissolves.
Okay, can you put that then in February, under fiscal year 2019 budget?
Question mark, I guess.
Yeah, good, okay. So, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great, that passes, meeting adjourned.